Ready to go, folks? Thank you. David, I give you a heads up that we need to nominate and then approve of chairman of the day. How do we do that from our citizen members? I guess the motion can come from the floor. You have no chair?
Would you like to run the bond? Chair of the day? Second. I object.
And we'll ask for... There was a second? Was it Rich? Rich, okay. And you want to do the roll? Or? Yeah. Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Who else is here? Commissioner Batten?
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz?
Present.
Are you in favor of the motion?
Oh, sorry, I missed... Yes, I'm in favor of the motion.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And about to be Chair Vines?
Aye.
Motion passes with all present voting? Yes. Thank you. Randy, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much for the honor. I guess, starting off, we ought to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. So is this something we can do by roll?
You need to initiate a motion, ask for a motion to approve?
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Is there a second? Okay, we got a second.
And you could do previous roll if you wanted to do that. You should have, I have a motion to do the previous roll.
Previous roll.
Did someone already make it?
I cannot combine here.
Hearing no objection to previous roll, motion carries.
Okay, so we have hearing no objections to previous roll.
This is Tracy. Don't I need to abstain?
If you don't... You can, if you have no objection, you can go ahead and go with it. If you want to abstain, then we can do a roll call.
Oh, I don't mind. If you're okay with it, I'll go with it.
I see people do all different things.
Okay. All right, I'm fine.
Very, very technical. It's random.
There are a bar I missed on the way in.
Kind of random. We're starting off great here.
So, Mr. Chairman, to give you some comfort, I'll ask the attorney, are you comfortable that we have opened the meeting properly, elected a chairman, and approved the minutes?
Yes.
Right.
Well, thank you. Seeing no objection, we've got motion carries. We move on to the first action meeting, which looks like Tower Grove East Local Historic District.
Yeah. Thank you. Good evening. The first item in your address has been presented is to request for a new local historic district in the Tower Grove East neighborhood. The petition was submitted by Alderman and Gracia, who worked extensively with the neighborhood and with Stan Krasna, the Director of Cultural Resources Office, to put the petition together. You can see the subject site on the screen now. The subject site on your screen now is outlined in red. The Tower Grove East neighborhood boundary is outlined in black. And as you can see, they do not match. And this map will show you why. Map shows you the boundaries of the existing historic district. The first one is the light view just north of the proposed boundaries, and this is the existing Compton Hill Local Historic District. The proposed boundaries before you this evening meet the boundary of the existing Compton Hill District. Additionally, you can see that most of the area within the proposed district is already within an existing National Registered District. There are three. The Tower Grove East Historic District in the northeastern section of the district, so the proposed district, I'm sorry, I'm saying district a lot. The proposed, I'm sorry, the Tower Grove Heights National District, which covers a majority of the western side of the proposed district. And the Crittenden National District is also a small portion on the western side of the proposed district. So essentially, most of the proposed district is within a National Registered District, so this is a layer to ensure that we're preserving the character of this neighborhood. There are a few pockets that are not within the historic district, including the bottom corner of the neighborhood.
Not in the National Registered?
If not in the National, it will be, it is supposed to be within the local district. There are a few things to note about this particular local historic district. These standards would only be applied to new construction as well as the addition of existing buildings. However, they would not be applied to any modifications of existing buildings otherwise. While this does include place design considerations for new construction, including fences, bylaws, steps, retaining law, etc., for new construction, they would not be under consideration for an existing building to put in some of these standards. The exact applicability will be determined by the Cultural Resources Office on a case-by-case basis, and they will be the decider. When a permit is pulled within the area, the permit review will forward it to the Cultural Resources staff to determine that, and they will put it through the process if necessary. Additionally, the neighborhood committee board will be appointed for the district, and the Cultural Resources Office will always recommend that any construction developers submit their plans to the committee, whether or how much to be considered by the Cultural Resources Office, and the preservation board as applicable. Now, while these standards are only applicable to new construction in addition to existing buildings, you may be wondering what the implications are for the standards, since the standard is fairly well built out. The map on the screen now shows all of the vacant lots within the proposed boundaries. There are 24. And these are the potentially vacant lots. Potentially vacant, which just means that they are vacant, they're not built upon, but they may, they may not be tax linked. They may be maintained or owned by a richer school, but the potential is still there for opening and therefore the potential to be in access. Additionally, there are vacant buildings, and these are those vacant buildings. And these are the potentially vacant buildings, which maybe aren't tax linked, but they have been at some point boarded up and/or are showing signs of abandonment. So to alter these buildings, they would not need to follow the standards, but any additions would. Together, that's 84 vacancies and potential vacancies, which could be affected by the standards. And not to mention, should any of the areas redevelop, such as Schnucks or the gas station on Grant and Grabway, they may continue to follow the standards as well. The strategic land use plan calls for predominantly the preservation of neighborhood areas, the areas in yellow. There is one small area designated as neighborhood development area, and that's on Park Street. It's currently a parking lot behind the bank and the roosters. The proposed district aims to preserve the character of the neighborhood and is therefore in keeping with the strategic land use plan. There are no adopted neighborhood plans for this area. This is the zoning map for the proposed district. Predominantly two-family zoning with some commercial zoning along Grant and Grabway, above some smaller commercial buildings. And I'm going to go through some pictures quickly, just to jog your memory of the area. But I'm going to go through them very quickly. If you want me to stop, go back, go down, so if you'd let me know. They'll go in order, starting with number one on the south side of the district, New Grabway. And then travel north, Long Grabway, northeast Long Grabway. Turn north on Nebraska. Then we'll see some photos along the northern boundary of the proposed district, South Grand Grand. And finally, the last three photos are within the district.
And you're allowed to tip your driver?
Yeah. So we're driving. Here we go. So here we are on Grabway and Patilman, looking southwest. The gas station there, small building. The Schnucks, if you're heading just north of there. Grabway and McKeen Avenue, looking west from Grabway, but mostly family buildings. Some parking lots. Grabway and Louisiana, looking southwest. Some family and two-family homes along Grabway and youth house. Heading to South Compton, which is a car lot there. And some homes on Grabway and Michigan. Nebraska Avenue, returning now. This is the Crittenden Street and Nebraska Avenue, northwest. This is Petalodee and Nebraska, looking west. You can see that Dot is following there, hopefully that's helpful. Nebraska Avenue between Petalodee and Magnolia, some single-family, some little homes, looking north. Magnolia Avenue, looking west from Nebraska. Heading further north from Nebraska, between Magnolia and Sydney. This is the two-second block of Victor Street, looking north, heading for west along the northern boundary of the proposed district. This is Minnesota Avenue, looking south. The 2400 block of Virginia, looking northeast. And Virginia, 2600 block of Virginia. This is within the district. This is 2300 block of Louisiana, looking northeast. On 2300 block of Tennessee Avenue, looking northwest. 3400 block of Sydney Street, approaching Grand. And here we are, Magnolia Avenue at Arkansas, looking northeast. And Magnolia Avenue, looking south of 3500 block. 2800 block of South Grand Boulevard, looking northeast. Petalodee Avenue, 3500 block, looking south. This is the Crittenden Historic District. It's the small historic district that we saw earlier. The 3400 block of Crittenden Street, looking northeast. And this is the 3500 block of South Grand Boulevard, looking north. And the 3400 block of Arsenal Street, looking southeast. This is New York Street. South Grand, 3300 block. Still going south, this is St. Thomas Church. And here, within the district, Petalodee and Compton, looking northwest. And 3400 block of Connecticut, southeast. And finally, Roosevelt High School. So the most of the cultural historic district standards is in form of a strategic land use plan, strategic exemption, and staff has been under approval for the cultural historic district standards. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
So in your, as an attachment, is the whole petition, this is the petition process, sometimes it's done exclusively by the neighborhood. In this case, the Alderman asked that we help, which we are glad to help and did. So the petition follows the full format of all the things we need to have documentation, you can look at it, a lot of floor looks like, and maps, or a lot of standard exhibits, given the context of the historic district being there. But as Cecilia has mentioned, it's a local historic district, and we will now have the regulation of new construction. We'll now get a design review at the Cultural Resources Office.
Which doesn't happen when it's a national.
Which, yeah, a good one. So it doesn't, so it's one of those funny but nice push-pulls, is that does not happen, there's not a local review just because it's in a national historic district. Homeowners and owners of buildings that are in the national historic district can apply for tax credits to help renovate their homes. And then when you do that, you follow the Secretary of Interior's standards for renovation. So I think, Chairman Vines, we have a representative, Mr. Robinson from the neighborhood and Alderman Gracia. I don't want to steal the thunder, but ask them to say anything they want about this, but I have a hunch you might hear that on some of these vacant lots, inappropriate development or design might have been popping up.
Okay. Paul, you want to add something? Do you like to add?
Not necessarily. I mean, yes, to John's point, the issue that we've had is that when we have developers who aren't asking any contingency with respect to tax incentives, we have, you know, building regulators, own construction. We've had a couple of homes go in that don't really look or feel like the neighborhood, and some others propose. And so this is an effort to have a balance for that, have property being developed and in construction.
Is it a trailer situation? Here or something?
Something like that.
Yeah. Double Y. It's a double Y. It's not a big, but that's a clear one. Okay. Two components of what turned out to be a two-story, but they rolled in on a truck. They were parked in the neighborhood for two days. So for two days, looking at what we thought was going to be Double Y. Double Y went into the neighborhood.
Okay.
Yes, it turned out to be a very narrow house, but that little episode kind of got everyone else thinking that to preserve the existing character of the neighborhood is a good idea to have a local district. I want to point out that we don't want to stifle creativity, and this is not an anti-contemporary design. It's more so to make sure that the materials and the quality of the craftsmanship is on par with the rest of the neighborhood. Because that was a concern to some of the neighbors and some of the developers who had the wind up in the head for this kind of stifled creativity. And that is, if you want to make sure that whatever is added to the neighborhood enhances it and doesn't detract from it.
Thank you for that feedback. Any questions, comments from the commissioners? Questions? So when did this whole process start, and how did you go about getting, talking to neighbors and getting feedback on that?
So the process started in the summer of 2016. At the time, I wasn't the president of the neighborhood in the foundation. And then over the course of February 2017 through September of 2017, two of them were public meetings. Two of them were smaller scale meetings for committee and candidates. We had one meeting, high level, what the intent was. The second meeting was to craft the first draft. After the first draft was created, that was posted up to the North of the vote edition. Playbook phase, everybody got just looked at and commented. We took all the comments, got together again as a group, and incorporated that feedback into the second draft. And the second draft was posted up to the next vote edition, website four, comment. After the second one, thought we had a pretty good draft, which was moving forward to Dan's name to cut. It's what we have, rather, is what we need to do to...
You also talked about it, that we're going to build our own, yeah.
Is there been any pushback from the new website?
The duty, pushback, no. There were concerns, and also incorporated to the dance, no major concern, which was just pointed out there. You're trying to stifle creativity, and you must make sure that that thing is clear, that that wasn't what our intent was. It was more so with the quality of the building, the spirit of being chosen.
We're perfect for going into these projects, or the neighborhood, on a certain day, if like, we felt that we didn't want to price neighbors out, um, in the historic standards in respect to the construction project.
On to the point that you had to...
Sure. So who makes the final decision on the design, if somebody's going to be in construction? I heard there'd be a neighborhood committee board set up. Who would appoint that? How does that work?
Well, those are the advisory, the Cultural Resources Office oversee the standards.
So it's a delegation to the local community to get some feedback, but the decision and the responsibility lies in the Cultural Resources Office?
Okay.
When I envision kind of the whole, to when a new business wants to move into the petition, I guess, is for some more. But before they move forward, they come from the neighborhood association, and these typically talk to the board body, and then more of a deep dive at the board, or the board would ask questions, some kind of preview of what they're proposing to build or whatnot. But from what I understand from Cultural Resources, our opinion, just that it was opinion, but ultimately the process, grasp, and rely on the cultural resources. That was something that was important to us, too, for obvious reasons. We don't want, we're part of the community, so we don't want to be the voice pushing back on the one who they want to be. You want to deal with, you just want to make sure what you're adding, proposing.
And out of curiosity, I noticed there were like four points of historic, hold on, historic, landmarks, someone lost slide.
Yeah.
It looks like four bullet points of historic.
Yeah, those are historic landmarks.
Okay, landmark. So, and I'm reading through here the previous commission. Is that Hamiltonian, Hamiltonian, is that Hamiltonian?
Sorry, I have to mark the loan by 17 in the packet.
Former seventh district police station, William Bueller House and Grant School. Were those, were those the four?
So you're reading part of the nomination from a previous historic, national historic district?
Yeah, I'm on page three of nine. It just says previous commission action. I was just, I couldn't read it. Well, they're, they're right there. Yeah, it looks like it's in Grant School.
Yeah, there's historic sites.
And the reason I kind of brought it up, the...
Former seventh district police station, Grant School, Federal Savings and Loan Association Building, the William Bueller House and, yeah, Grant School.
So where is Roseville High School?
It's right there at Compton and...
It wouldn't be a landmark. It's a Grant School, maybe it was, I'm not sure, what made Grant School make it in that?
I'm not sure. They go through a separate process, but I was not...
So at some time, some point, somebody went through a process for those to become landmarks.
Oh, okay, before a whole district was made.
Potentially, likely so. Now those buildings that were within the historic district, in the historic district nomination itself, the properties across from the Roosevelt School, the school itself will have been classified as to whether they're contributing, qualifying, how historic they are.
Uh huh.
And then the overlay of the federal district will give them that an ash of being historic, by themselves, as part of the district. Okay. Thank you.
I think the historic districts that get certified at a national level qualify for historic tax credits, and so that's why a lot of buildings do that. And school district probably has them.
But the blue is the national historic, right?
Yeah, so it's...
So everything in there qualifies for the federal tax credit and all that. And then the dots, like Grant School and the Bueller House, they're outside of national historic district, but on their own, they qualify. Got it. Okay.
Questions? So hypothetically, if you can say it, Schnucks wanted to, you know, rebuild the store, you know, tear it down, it's federal, they would be stuck there.
But they wouldn't qualify for federal historic tax credits?
No.
It's not in the blue. I didn't talk to you guys.
And remember, for some of you that participate in how some things get funded, if it's a property within the national registered district, and it's a contributing building to the national registered district when it was created, we document that. Section 106 also applies when we apply federal funds, which might, so. Section 106 meaning following along with district standards.
Anything else for the commissioners?
And for everybody's, just a reminder, before the chairman calls for the motion and the vote, at this stage, it's been forwarded to us by the Cultural Resources Office and the Preservation Board for us to look at it. The Board of Public Service will look at the application. Our comments go back, our approval goes back. There'll be, before the Preservation Board, a hearing, and then it will go to the Board of Alderman, and they'll all be here. I think the neighborhood is even preparing some postcards to notify the public of when the hearing date is, so the public can come and have that chance to speak at it. And the other thing I'll point out, Randy is sitting there, is one of the unique things of the membership of one particular individual on the planning commission, or actually, vice versa, is one particular individual on the Preservation Board also needs, or our departments are, also serve on the planning commission, so if there's some nuances from our discussion or conversation, Randy will be our ambassador back to the Preservation Board, as he's on both boards.
All hands.
All hands. So on a given Monday, he might be at Preservation meeting, on a given Wednesday, he might be here.
Don, I have a question for Don. Don, some of these districts, I mean, you hear stories, some of them are urban legends, some of them are fast. But in some districts, do they have prohibition on certain colors that you can paint your house? Is there something we can ask?
So, it's a very good question. It's a very sort of much debated question around the country. We are, there may be some in the city that does, but generally not. There are some things about shading and tones and things like that that you shouldn't do, but there's not necessarily a prescription of what colors you have to use.
And that is like a historic building in a preservation review district. We actually just heard a recent one at the Preservation Board, where someone had a turn century house in central West End, did some refurbishing and cosmetic stuff on the outside, and actually painted the original wood, kind of, there's terracotta and some wood paneling underneath, and that was, that did not pass muster with Cultural Resources, because it is in a very stringent historic district.
And that one had standards about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So there's no other discussion or questions from there?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I don't mean to belathe you guys, but, so let's suppose somebody does paint it pink, and then calls me, we say, hey, look, someone complained, so then how do you get them to repaint it?
So one thing, of course, is Cultural Resources. You know, to be fair, when you come in this door here, often you're coming to the second floor here to ask somebody for money, to help you in development. With the historic preservation world and standards, we're trying to make sure that these neighborhoods are kept intact, the values are kept intact, and Cultural Resources is on that front line to evaluate things. They're not giving out money. They're doing a very hard job of telling somebody what are the rules are, what you can do and not. If they are, the applicant doesn't like the answer from staff, it's appealed to the Preservation Board. And then the Preservation Board can overrule staff with finding certain characteristics of their, either from the standards or their principles, and that can get turned over. Other than that, you end up going to court. And, you know, in some building code violations, some people will go and live with the $500 fine, those type of things. We haven't put anybody in jail after painting that house.
So they could pay the fine theoretically.
They're right.
They could pay the $500 fine or whatever it is, and then keep it pink.
And then we go back and tell them that...
I think it would depend on the case. There are times that we have actually, you know, had to rule against a property owner for not complying with the Preservation Review ordinance. And in that case, what they ostensibly do is they go back and undo whatever they did that was wrong. A lot of times, that cost them an awful lot of money they spent. And sometimes they have legitimate reasons for not knowing about it, or, you know, why they did that. And they can usually negotiate some terms that may get more palatable with Cultural Resources. So try to avoid, you know, sticking in with something, you know, crazy and unreasonable, as long as they show like good faith trying to resolve it.
The one thing that we just wanted, well, we wanted to be certain that we didn't put any constraints on the neighborhood or on the community. So, we made it clear that we were already addressing the construction as addition because the neighborhood, you saw from the map, the map is pretty well baked, so there are some areas of potential construction or whatnot that could run off the rails, but for the existing construction that is in hand, one, I don't anticipate anybody painting their house a rainbow color, but if someone were to do that, these factors would not have resulted. And that would by the time.
Thank you. Anything else? So, does anyone have a motion?
Move rule.
Second? We got a seconded, Alderman, by Commissioner Boyd. And do we do a roll?
And if there's a motion for previous, we can do a roll. Roll call, Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Van.
Aye.
Commissioner Boad.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
And Chair Vann.
Aye.
Motion passes with all present voting?
Yes.
So, we have just a couple of quick things to do and before that, I'll pocket just a bit. The main thing I just wanted to tell folks is, A, the cultural resources office and the preservation board are also sort of working with the fact that new construction is something that is sometimes misunderstood, so they're putting in some common policy about new construction. That's been vetted over the past couple of years, so that's coming through. And second, completely and general to that, is a staff member of PDA years ago, I had to go out and take pictures of new funky buildings, residential buildings across the city. And it was kind of a fun thing to do. You get, you know, poke under covers and ask about them. And she's about ready to do that again. And we'll have a little sample document to sort of show that there is creativity in the city of, as you may know, there's a house made out of shipping containers going off in old North St. Louis. We found out that there's a staff member here that has two lots consolidated and has an earth sheltered house that he wrote. There's a house in Dogtown that's almost net zero. So, we'll get pictures of all those just to sort of show ourselves that in the 6260 miles, there is quite a bit of creativity along with our historic value architecture. The two items I'm going to present real quick are not really items at all. It's almost just a technicality. We're asking that we have, or other partners have produced some plans. First of all, we're talking about is the Clifton Heights Park Master Plan. So, it's been administered through the Board of Public Service with the Parks Department and had a private consulting firm working with it, SWT Design, began quite a while ago with a site survey. It's a neighborhood park that I happen to live on and they've now granted through the neighborhoods, through the technical aspects, and they have produced a plan, as we have in a number of other city parks that we've adopted. The request now has come through that we come, it's having adopted by the planning commission and therefore with that, we come to you and we just request that the planning commission agree that you will allow and conduct a presentation and a public hearing and a future planning commission and direct staff to fulfill all the procedural requirements for doing that. Meaning, this will be a meeting where we present the plan. Some of you have witnessed us doing that before. We'll open the floor for public hearing. It will be noticed and we'll have public comment before you guys rule about the plan. Many of these things have gone through extensive public participation prior to coming to us so it's sort of a catch-all for our public presentation, but we do ask your permission that we would advertise and we ask that you give us permission to advertise and put on the agenda the presentation in the public hearing. Advertising gets a little tricky, gets a little tricky particularly this time of year with the holidays and scheduling it. So, our intent that this would be at the December meeting, but we might end up having a scenario that it's not, but I just ask your permission to have before you on an agenda, a presentation in the public hearing on the Clifton Heights Park Master Plan.
And I suppose we need a motion?
We need a motion.
We have a motion.
Can we, can we talk about it?
This is kind of odd to me only because it's like stuff I think the Alderman do anyway. Why are we doing a formal? I don't, how has this become formal? So, I think about capital, food and dollars and upgrades to parks. Okay, we want to swing that, we want to bike trail, we want to drive a lot and add money to it in the matching funds and it just happens. You have community input, of course, at the ward meetings, you know, ask people what you like, what you see and it just happens.
So, two things.
What's the difference?
Two things. One, been to Forest Park 20 years ago, 15 years ago, been to Forest Park today?
Yeah.
It's an adopted plan by the planning commission that's been followed. With some, it was pretty high levels, adopted, and then there are incremental projects that go, continue through it that need to be generally in compliance with the plan itself that we've done. We've done that subsequently when the Parks Department and BPS puts a plan together for a park as opposed to just the willing and willing of the neighborhood meeting or something that has received funding and Alderman's blessing, it provides a backbone and the structure that if you deviate from would be an exception.
So, there are certain parks in the city that have plans and then the rest of the parks are just kind of at will.
The first part is true. First part, certain parts of the city have gone through, SWT Design is actually now works internationally, but it's based here, did the design for this. And so, it was pretty damn rigorous with Richard's team, with GBS and Parks Department and the neighborhood, weighing what to do and what not to do and putting it on paper, professional advice. So, I can't remember whether it's five or six with plans.
Okay. I didn't realize that. I knew about Forest Park and its master plan, I'd never heard of any other parks.
So, Forest Park has one and Forest Park also has an advisory board. Part of that park has a plan, it has an advisory board. And the advisory boards are, Forest Park is particularly robust, their job is to oversee the projects that are coming forth for that park are done in compliance with the master plan, number one. And number two, because they're more detailed design projects, to make evaluations and recommendations, so it is recommendations to the product director, that these people coming forward and putting the design together and putting the project together are doing a good job, sticking to the principles of the plan even though they change a little bit. And it's a pretty rigorous park. If they, somebody comes and they want to do something that is not in general conformance of the master plan, it has to come back to us and we have to go through the process of amending it. So, we've amended the Forest Park Master Plan three times at the planning commission, but this committee is sort of the interim step. They have a certain authority, but they can't really do something that's outside the master plan.
Is this background or do I have a master plan?
I'm trying to visualize the list. I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you. And Don?
You know, for the discussion, I believe Commissioner Bradley had a motion.
Will it go through?
Second?
Second.
Second and
Previous roll.
Previous roll.
And we will be adopting this under a topic called topical plans. We have comprehensive plans, we have neighborhood plans and we have topical plans. This will be a topical plan.
Do I have to say all in favor? Say aye. Motion carries, I guess.
It was previous roll.
We'll move on to the next one, which is the last action item for tonight. It is again, very similar in nature and we're just asking you permission to conduct a hearing and conduct a presentation and a hearing at a subsequent planning commission and to fulfill the notice requirements, i.e. the advertise for that. In this case, it's a recently completed examination for downtown called the Downtown St. Louis There are some members who are sitting around this table that are at the far end on the side, that probably have a few more gray hairs about wrestling over transportation issues downtown. And so, there was a plan commissioned for downtown by BPS, done with private consultants and a great deal of stakeholder work, began in 2017, workshops, the final report was presented to the downtown group. It is now being offered to us to be this overlay, this topic about addressing transportation downtown. You'll hear more at the presentation. And its presentation will be to us. It will be included, again, a public hearing, again, it's been vetted quite a bit downtown. We will be doing two things. We will be comparing it to the general downtown as the strategic land use plan and it also has a neighborhood plan for downtown that's quite dated, but we are comparing, making sure that they're not in conflict at the hour, so it's not to change. But in other words, as I called this a topical plan, it will be a subtopic to downtown planning on transportation. So, we ask your permission that we, again, schedule it for a meeting. It may not be the December meeting, it may actually be the January meeting, where it was advertised.
Would you look to have those at the same meeting or two different meetings?
Probably going to be two different meetings.
Any other questions?
She wants to approve.
Do I have a motion? Okay. So, you're back in this previous roll if there's a question? That was very efficient.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's the end of your action items for tonight. We've seen that there's some delegated items regarding some small Captain 99 blind study. There are several categories. We have nothing to report, but I'll just mention one item, just, we started out with a placeholder, the special use district that was created for a geography around the National Geospatial Site. And you guys, you, meaning the planning commission, approved it in December of last year, went through it, becomes, has to become an order. It went to a public hearing, it went to the Board of Alderman. It was then actually tabled in spirit. In reality, it was pulled from the automatic agenda and more effort was put into going and having meetings in community in the course of the spring and the fall by St. Louis Development Corporation that are trying to advocate the things around the NGA area. And that's, that tirepicking is about coming to a close. We've had approved it. It looks like it will stay intact as we approved it, but for some things might be deleted from it. And as long as they're deletes, not substantive adds, we won't need to see it again, but I thought I'd give you an update that it's still a work in progress and it's not yet. And that, Mr. Chairman, is all we have tonight, other than reminding you that our next meeting is scheduled for December 5th.
Okay, December 5th. Everyone got that? And I guess there was an email that went out about January date changing, right?
Right.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we have a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Check.
Previous roll. Thanks so much for having us.